Get started, just for the respect of everyone's time here tonight. And so we've got a joint meeting tonight and we will start with, uh, we'll call the meeting to order and do our prayer and our pledge. So if y'all please.
We've only been Butch to open up the meeting.
Yes, so we'll open this up and then Butch you'll.
Okay, this meeting of, uh, the Levelland Planning and Zoning Commission is now called to order.
Okay, if y'all will please join us, our pledge and our prayer, we'll do the prayer first. Father, we just thank you tonight for all of these seats that are filled here. We just thank you that they're giving their time to the city of Levelland. If they're willing to try to make this place the best it can be. We just pray for your hand of protection over our community. And all of our first responders and all of our citizens. We just pray that you give us wisdom tonight, Lord, to make Levelland the best it can be, in Jesus' name, amen. And so just please, um, follow the pledges for us, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which sustains. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas state under God, one and indivisible. And we do have one statement by citizens, uh, tonight, again, if it is. Anderson, so Mr. Anderson, if you don't mind, we're a little, we're usually in chambers, so I apologize for that. You'll please state your name and your address and then you'll have three minutes to speak and we thank you so much for joining us tonight. And at the end of that three minutes, I'll just respectfully let you know that your time is up, okay?
Sean Anderson, I live at three zero eight twelfth street. And over the past several weeks, I have emailed city council members or just my concerns about the rollout of smart meter technology. And I have received no response. Smart meters continually collect and transmit data. And all this data can be used for, you know, individual usage that correlate with daily routines and activities. Detailed data that is collected twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week. People shower, when they cook, when they use the bathroom, and when they are and are not home. How is this not a violation of the citizens of Levelland's privacy? Smart meters can expose sensitive information about people's household activity. This is a direct violation of individual privacy. I'd question against invasion of privacy. In two thousand nine, the Colorado Public Utilities Commission, Public Utilities, Leader in Privacy Report highlighted. The detailed information gathered by smart meters can expose consumers to more targeted and nefarious physical invasions because it's possible to clean. From the meter data. Smart meters are collecting more data than required to calculate a monthly bill. And as a result of these meters constantly monitoring consumption patterns could lead to higher bills. Government reports as well as security experts have explained the privacy concerns regarding smart meters, which will reveal people's household activities. By constantly measuring their utility usage. In two thousand twelve, former CIA Director David Petraeus. Sincerely stated that smart meters are excellent surveillance devices and smart meters know when you flush the toilet in your home. Once again, how is this not a violation of our individual privacy? All of this data is archived and utility companies can relay this information to a third party. Or this data has the potential to be hacked by a third party. Utilities are collecting vast amounts of data from advanced metering infrastructure. I do not want my privacy invaded, archived, and sold. More than fifty California municipalities have issued moratoriums, the right for consumers to opt out, and outright bans on smart meters. The health consequences are also devastating as smart meters emit radio frequency radiation, which is a biologically active electromagnetic exposure that is absorbed into our bodies. So how do you think this is going to affect children who have thin skulls and underdeveloped brains? Radio frequency radiations penetrates deeper into children's bodies and brains. And the American Academy of Pediatrics considers children to be more vulnerable to radio frequency radiation. Peer-reviewed science has found increased cancer, immune system damage, head headaches ringing in the ears due to radio frequency radiation generated by smart meters. A bioinitiative report cites more than twenty-two hundred scientific studies linking electromagnetic exposure to neurological effects, fetal effects, DNA damage. Breast cancer, oxidative stress.
Out of time.
Brain cancer and decreased fertility. Levelland residents should at least have the option to opt out of smart.
Anderson.
Their existing meters. I, Sean Anderson, do not consent to having a smart meter installed. As this is a direct violation of my Fourth Amendment constitutional rights, text me against the invasion of privacy.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson.
Thank you.
For joining us.
Have a good day.
You as well. Thank you.
Do not consent.
This time we'll, we'll move forward with our agenda. Are we gonna move forward with Freez and Nichols first? Okay, so at this time I'll turn the floor over to Freez and Nichols. Everyone, I believe, has an agenda there with them and we'll just turn the floor over to them.
Commission Chair, um, you do have a little bit more detailed, um, agenda in front of you that runs through, um, some of the talking points from tonight. This is meant to be an open discussion. Um, this is a listening session for, for us. Um, to kind of learn more about what y'all are seeing, uh, in terms of your developments, um, in Levelland. And what you are hoping to, uh, kind of achieve through the update of the zoning ordinance. Um, updating a zoning ordinance is a big task, um, for, for any city. Levelland dates back to nineteen eighty-one, um, so that's almost forty-four years, um, which means it's an even bigger task. Um, so we'll start with a, with kind of project introductions. Um, I'm gonna ask, kind of go around the room and. Um, if you feel comfortable sharing, um, and your perspective on the zoning ordinance or development or zoning in Levelland. And kind of what you would hope to achieve through a project like this, then, um, and help us get to know each other a, a little bit better. And it's gonna save the, the discussion that we'll, we'll try to have this evening. Um, so apologies to, um, those who are not facing the screen. I don't know if our clicker's working or not, or.
Hey, look on the side, there's that on and off thing.
It's on, yeah. But I can stand back there and. Okay, there we go. Um, my name is, uh, David Jones. I'm the project manager with, uh, with Freez and Nichols. Um, with me is Abdul Ghos. Um, we're, um, both out of Fort Worth. So we are in the urban planning group, um, with Freeze and Nichols. So we work with cities all over Texas. Um, to update development codes, uh, to do long-range planning, uh, basically help, uh, y'all grow in a, in a way that's, uh, that's right for you. And, and appropriate for, um, for you, um, coming with kind of viewed ideas about Levelland or, or how y'all should grow. Um, we're here to listen to what your priorities are, um, the issues that, that you see and help y'all develop, uh, solutions for, uh, for moving forward. Um, and growing in, in the way that, uh, that y'all envision. Um, we also have a couple of other folks on, on our project team. Uh, Heather Keister is actually right up the road in, in our Lubbock office. Um, some of y'all know her. Um, she's functioning as the, the principal in charge and also the client representative. Um, so making sure that, um, again, y'all are doing what you need, making sure that we're doing our jobs. Um, and then Chance Sparks. Um, some of you may know him. Uh, he's a kind of quality control, so we're probably gonna engage him a couple of times on, on those projects. Um, where, you know, we need a little bit of extra muscle, um, and, and brain power. Um, just a little bit about Abdul and I, we both have a, um, municipal backgrounds. Um, I've worked for ten years, um, with various cities throughout Texas, also in Missouri. Um, I've been with Freeze and Nichols about three and a half years now. Um, so then been doing planning for fifteen years, give, give or take. Um, and Abdul has also been in the, the public sector, um, working for cities, uh, and is it Texas and Arkansas?
Texas and Arkansas.
Did I miss any?
Eight years in the public sector here.
Yeah, so we, we, we've been on this side, uh, of things. Um, we've, we've worked through some of these, these things, uh, ourselves. Involved in unencode updates in, in numerous cities, um, and, and Abdul has as well, so, um. We're always happy to, to work with cities and one of the best things about working for Freeze and Nichols is that we, we focus on public clients. You know, we work with cities, we work with counties, not with developers. So, uh, we like to think of ourselves as, uh, conflict-free, uh, in terms of staying on, on this side of the fence. Um, so at, at this point, I, I would like to maybe start on my left, uh, with Councilmember Powell. Um, and just tell us a little bit about, you know, how you see zoning, how you see developments, um, in Levelland. And, and how that perspective, uh, informs this project and what you would like to see, um, in the zoning ordinance update. Not to put you on the spot.
I was gonna say, that's, that's great to start on the spot off, off the bat here, but, uh, I, I honestly, I've been on the council now about nine, ten months. And I don't have very much. And it's not that I have neglected. Well, I had to layer it right quick, so I mouth myself out of trouble.
Uh, well, I guess how I see our zoning here in Levelland is kind of untouched. You said it, nineteen eighty-one. Um, we, we have a major housing shortage in all aspects. Um, we need small, if I wanna build my dream home, there's no place to do that. If I wanna build, um, a starter home, there's, there's not much for that either. Uh, so we're just kind of untouched. Uh, we did a major zoning update the other night at our last city council meeting. If you drove by down one fourteen and went by Brahms and our new car wash, that was industrial until last week. So that's just kind of a prime example of we're, we're kind of just not updated. We meant well. That was industrial because there used to be a cottage in there. That made sense forty years ago. It just, it doesn't make sense anymore. And so is, housing is a big thing for me, but housing is not all what Levelland is. You know, we just, we just built a Wendy's. I don't know if it's heard, but we're getting a Whataburger. It's kind of a big deal.
You did hear that.
Yes, we've got other companies looking to come to town, looking, I mean, this close to buying property and. And so that's why this is such a big, the council and is such a big part of our strategic planning is. We've gotta get our ducks in order and, and get things in order. We've got people that wanna build houses and they say that our setbacks aren't right. We need to get these things right and, and make this easier for people to do business. We're not just farming and ranching. We have some industrial and some oil in there as well, as long as, as well as with our industrial, you know, agricultural businesses. So we're a mix, but we need to get it right. And so we're willing to invest the money to, to try to get it right.
I'll defer to the realtors. I'm also very new. Uh, was put on with Mr. Powell, but I'll just piggyback off the housing. We have builders wanting to come in, um, who have already bought land out in between the Country Club and Holly Heights area. And they're having to build these homes, um, on very small lots with backyards that can't even fit a trampoline essentially in them. Um, so housing, I'll, that's, I'm a realtor, so I'm gonna piggyback off that. That's the big thing for me. Uh, like she said, we're not just housing, um, but that's a huge thing that I see.
Like on all of our ordinances, we need to kind of look them over and make sure they're still relevant, who we are, what we are, and what we wanna look like. But we've got some sign ordinances. We need to make sure those are still appropriate. Uh, the, the ordinance is as much as the zoning. The zoning, we sure need to, to watch and make sure that we have those right. There's some pockets that we have some industrial. Is that appropriate? Do we need to change that? I think we need to look at that, but also when we start looking on, on those, those ordinances that go along with that. Uh, we've got a lot of, of, uh, substandard structures that we're having demolished and all. And it's leaving, and for the most part, in, in the areas where they're at, a fifty-foot lot. There's not a lot of building that you can do on a fifty-foot lawn. The last thing I wanna do is just put a bunch of manufactured homes in the middle of our, our, uh, residential districts, you know? I, I would not mind seeing a manufactured home subdivision or an area for those. I think it'd be awesome, but they would need to have, you know, skirting. And, you know, those ordinances to protect that, to keep them looking good. But what do we do in that infield? How do we fill that infield? And I think that's something that we need to make sure our ordinances and our zoning does, does allow us to do that. Whether it's to bring in a, a free manufactured home, uh, you know, a, a ready-built in Brahms side, something that you can do. I think those are some possibilities to look at on the tax side of that, but on what, on the, the zoning ordinance, I think we need to make sure that those all fit where we're at today.
Yeah, I mean, a lot of the same, I mean, I, you'll hear the same thing coming around on this whole table. It's not nineteen eighty-one anymore. So, um, so we, we do need to be updated. Obviously, we had a, we had a night the other night where we're dealing with industrial. It needs to be business. It's holding a business up, but we don't wanna be able to stop progress. Community, we wanna be able to have progress, whether that be with restaurants, businesses, houses, whatever. But it's not, it's not eighty-one anymore, so let's, let's update and move forward.
Bring this thing back.
I don't know. I think one of the big, big concerns is the way we look as a community. You know, uh, we talked about the substandard housing and stuff like it, you know? Uh, we've been making a lot of efforts trying to defend some of those structures. They leave holes, just like what he's talking about. They leave holes and, uh, uh, we've gotta figure out what we need to do. As far as, uh, zoning and stuff like that, you know, we just need to kind of be ahead of the game. Uh, I'll kind of look into that crystal ball a little bit and, and determine, uh, where we wanna be. As far as businesses are concerned, where they need to be and all that. So that's, that's the way I'm seeing it right now.
You know, I think we're pretty fortunate that Levelland is, you know, we've got three things going for it. We got the college going up there. We got oil and we got farm. We got three powerful things that, that Levelland, it thrives on. But I'm kind of like the rest of the group. We, we do a lot of demolition, but there's just vacant lots that are just sitting there. And, uh, like I said, there's not a very big lot, but I don't know if a small, small home, small, tiny home, or whatever they call them. I don't know if that, that might be an option that we're looking at. One of the main issues is, is finding people to be able to afford housing. I mean, some of the houses that's up on the market right now is high dollar and the average Jane Doe can't afford, you know, fifteen, sixteen, eighteen hundred dollars a month. House payment, so they're, they're, they're forced to rent. And, uh, I have several rental properties and, uh, the rental properties, I mean, I have, I have several, like I said, and, and they're in demand. We, we need more rental properties. We need.
Shortage.
Yeah, there's a shortage, yeah. That's what I'm trying to say, shortage, so, um. Anything that, the housing, I think we, we, we need to look into. Industrial park, I don't know if we had any, uh, activity out there here lately. That's a, a huge factor that we need to tap into that hasn't been, um, recognized here lately, I think. Uh, that would be a huge asset if we could, um, people to come into an industrial park that we, we set up.
Pete, you're up.
Um, we are a growing community. And our, our ordinance needs to be applied according to what the city charter has it. Some of our orders needs to be updated, some may even need to be dealt away with. We are in fact growing and the, and the zoning, and the, is a major impact in the community. And we need more housing. We've all said that. We have, uh, other businesses coming in and hopefully they'll bring in more employees. Those employees, we're gonna need a place to live, so. I pass it on to you, Mr. City Manager.
Okay. Um, I had the pleasure of taking these two guys around today as we were looking at. Our, our community, discussing the various things, um, that we're looking for. You know, one of the big things that have been brought up to me was landscape ordinance provisions. So that when our commercial businesses, non-residential businesses come in, that, uh, we can require them to do more than just the basics. As Joe and Eli have dealt with some of these, uh, well, that's one of the questions they ask is, you know, what are your landscape regulations? We don't have any. Okay, well then we're not gonna do anything. It's very frustrating because they already have that stuff. They just don't wanna do it. But the other thing that they asked me, it's a question I wanna leave with you guys, because I think it's something that we ponder is. What do we want Levelland to look like? What do we wanna do that makes us stand out among the other cities in the South Plains? You know, our goal as, as a city is to be ver, be the preferred city of the South Plains. But what does that mean? What do we wanna look like? And we have to balance that so that we don't create a community that people can't afford to live in. But we also need to create a community that is unique and different, and it stands out among the best in the South Plains. Not just structurally, but just people-wise. And we already do that people-wise. This, this is an awesome community. But what can we do to make it look even better so that people take a second and third look when they're driving in? And we gotta work cut out for us. I think all of us know that from these zoning regulations, the code compliance, to a few other things. But, you know, as they say, the best way to eat an apple is one bite at a time, and that's what we gotta do.
I'd like to see it be more, uh, consistent, I guess, across, you know, zoning. Um, you know, a lot has changed in forty years. You know, Michael, you said it, you know, relevance, you know, we got things that are relevant. To things that were happening forty years ago. Um, there's things that probably need to be taken out, like Pete was saying. Um, I think James brought this up, uh, when it first came along and he was like, man, why, why is this even in there? And it talks about allowing for servants quarters, you know, residential areas, and he brought that up. It's like, you know, what is this? Like, why is this even in here? So it shows that we're, I, I don't wanna make it sound bad, but like, we're behind, you know, we're, we're, we're really behind. So I'd like to see that, you know, be updated and see the, you know, the zoning be a little bit more consistent to reflect what is already existing in those areas, so.
Eli and I deal with this zoning daily basis. The ones that deal with people. We have a lot of issues that come before us. There's a lot of people that. You know, said, because the ordinance is read the way they do, uh, but our job is to enforce that. There are some things they would like to change. There are some things that I would like to see in our ordinance that has not been there. For example, um, I think Roger brought up tiny homes. We don't have anything in our ordinance about tiny homes. We need something in our ordinance about tiny homes. They are a coming thing. We, we need to know what to do with those. We need a minimum square footage on a, on this, on a residential home. Uh, we don't have that. We got that. I mean, when you deal with things like off-street parking. It's people all over the town that, you know, just drop the car on the guy's front yard and it just creates a penalty. Well, again, we don't have anything to do with that. Another issue that Eli and I face constantly is people complain about the size of limitations on accessory buildings. I don't know if we can revisit that. Right now, there's, uh, the way our ordinance for these are minimum of five hundred square foot. Maximum five hundred square feet or twenty-five percent of the size of your main dwelling. Coming to that, that's just not big enough. That's not gonna do what we need. We wanna revisit that. Do we want? I don't know. Um, that's just something that we deal with on a database. I, I've got a lot of things to say, but I'll, I'll pass it on. I'll pass it on.
I don't have, it's more to reiterate. I think, you know, in a past life, I worked in county government, so the questions that we're asking in here, it's not new. It's not anything special to us. Communities our size go through this on a regular basis. Um, but what I do think is, is interesting is spending time looking to see what other institutes, other cities our size are doing with similar ordinances and similar issues. I mean, just in my time of planning and zoning, we finally addressed carports. We finally talked about food trucks, stuff that probably should have been talked about years, years before. Um, and so I, I think that was right. It's, it's time to think about what is coming, what we want things to look like, what the future needs to look like. And, you know, not just update stuff that's forty years old, but also put some forethought to what's going to be issues the next five to ten years.
Right, I don't wanna burst your bubble, but there's actually been a bill introduced in the legislature that takes away all regulations of food trucks.
I'm, I'm a fan of food trucks. That was not our problem last time.
It's just, and I placed an article out here just from the Texas Tribune, and there's a lot of bills being floated around in this session. That are really after land use. Trying their best to, to make it difficult. And I, I joked with these guys. I said, we might wanna slow this down so we know kind of what the legislature does. We'll be probably in the middle of this as the, the session ends, so we, we could tweak anywhere we need to tweak. Or we can, uh, hand the keys to Senator Perry and Representative King if they wanna run a city better than us and go that way as well, so.
I will say, I think for the council, one of our goals is minimal landscape ordinance, if I could list that as a priority. Um, I think if you'll drive our community, Tractor Supply is a great example. Uh, they absolutely would have put something in and have in all their other communities. And you could just drive down College Avenue and look at our new construction and think what it could have been. We don't want anything that is not business friendly. We don't want anything cost prohibitive. We are, have to take care of our water and use it wisely. Absolutely know that. But people expect it, Whataburger expects it, and we don't have it. So that's, that's a big use for us. And then it's kind of a charge to this group. How aggressive and what are our community standards? Are we gonna allow people to not park in their yard? We gonna let people keep their boat and their travel trailer in their, in their driveway forever? I've been in committees where that gets very contentious and it's, I'm not leaning one way or the other, but what are our community standards?
I was, I was kind of late. Uh, I was cut up with the neighbor over there. And, uh, the, my question is, like, a zoning, what do you do with the zoning of the schools that are closed down, like West Avenue? I've been, I've been approached about that. What are we gonna do for that, for that? People needs to, they want to know if they can restore it or sell it to somebody and redo it? Or what, what can we do with that?
Talking about West Elementary?
West Elementary.
West isn't even owned by the school anymore. It's been sold.
It's owned by private, private.
The private?
Company.
They are.
And they're taking care of it.
Their owner is trying to sell that, but previously selling it, he wanted to put a rehabilitation center there. And that's not zoned for that. No, it's not zoned for that.
Nor do, in my opinion, think it's appropriate for the neighborhood.
No, those houses right there don't wanna.
We discussed that today. We went by three, oh, the two schools that are sold and the one that's sitting there that is probably gonna go that way, so.
It's an issue, definitely an issue.
Yeah, but see that, that backyard of, of, back, on the back of school needs to be cleaned. Needs to be stayed clean. Because then that makes the, the neighborhood looks bad.
Oh, and it butts up to the city park.
Yeah, and it's close. Yeah, that's right, it's the city park. So that's, that was my issue, because I had people approach me about that.
Gonna hire you to get rid of the prairie dogs.
With a baby gun? Yeah, there's a lot of prairie dogs in that.
I do appreciate going through that exercise and. You got a, you got a couple?
Just one, one observation here, and I missed my first chance. I'm asking for another. But, uh, yeah, I've got a lot of experience in, in operating a rather large agency here. And we employ a lot of people and we lose a lot of people to Lubbock. And we've done it historically for many years because of the housing situation. And we don't have, uh, housing stocks that, uh, attract, uh, first home buyers, first time, well, single-family homes and those things. And that, that is a very difficult issue. We, we try to take that on as an organization. And it's, uh, it's a process that, it don't end this up to the kind of work we do. However, it's very close to what we do because of all the people that we have coming back and forth from other. I don't like to have, have that. I don't like to have my employees working here and living in Lubbock.
E, even apartments, we're, we're at a max and those haven't been, new apartments haven't been built in over forty years. And that's kind of unheard of, but we are at a max there, capacity.
David, there's one more thing, and, and I think we mentioned it, people on our, on our telephone phones. But we do need to revisit the cumulative zoning. See what we wanna do there. Uh, y'all know, y'all know what cumulative zoning is? Our, our single-family one is our most restricted. Then it goes to single-family two. And then it goes to, uh, multi-family one, two, three, four, and then business one and two, three, and then industrial. Anything you can do in any of the previous. In any of the previous. Uh. Zones you can, you're allowed to do. We'd like to do away with that, and they let each zone stand on its own. So American. In other words, if you have a business, a business property zoned for a, for a month or. Uh, you're not gonna be allowed to put a site-built home on it. Those types. Same thing with single family one, single family two. Single family one is site-built homes only. Single family two allows for manufactured homes, site-built home, ready-built homes. You can do any of those. Uh, we just need to read, I know some of those, restructure that. Take a look at it.
And to get back to. James, what you were saying, we are tracking the bill movements. Um, there's a lot of them. There's about nine thousand, I think, filed this. So, um, it's a full-time job and a half keeping up with all that, but. Um, there are a lot of bills related to zoning. One of them is related to manufactured housing, kind of what you're talking about, Joe, that. If it passed, we would have to set aside at least one zoning district where manufactured housing is allowed. Um, that could be the SF two, that could be a new manufactured housing district that we create to cover the existing manufactured housing, uh, parks. Um, that we have, and that SF two would transition the only site-built homes. Um. So that, those are the kinds of things that we'll be looking at as, as we go through this, this process. Another one is related to. Um, almost state mandated cumulative zoning, where if you've got a district that allows certain types of uses that are non-residential. It must now also allow certain types of residential zoning. That's a, that's another bill that's kind of making its way through the legislature right now, so. We'll look at the timeline of the project in, in a minute. I do think that, that that lines up fairly well, assuming we don't have a rash of special sessions this time. Like we did last time. Um, and that those bills kind of go into effect when they're, when they're supposed to, or maybe don't go into effect. Uh, but we'll certainly be tracking that. Hopefully not too many of those decisions get made for us, and we can still sit around this table and, and work those out ourselves. Um, but did want to. I don't know why it keeps, uh.
Is it?
Yeah. Um. And, and this is again intended to be interactive. I appreciate y'all going through that exercise. We've got a couple of other exercises as we move throughout the evening. Maybe I should just stand over there and.
Well, it's not done. I can't do it.
It's too late for him.
Okay, this is a good slide. Okay, so we're essentially in month one of a, of a nine-month project, so as you can see, we've got a couple of like. Um, got a couple of these joint meetings kind of scheduled. This body, this joint body is, is essentially gonna function as the steering committee for the project. Um, that's why I wanted to kind of go around the room and get everybody's take and thought about this. Um, from the beginning, because we're gonna be working a lot together over the next nine months. Uh, we'll, we'll be coming out here six different times. Um. Couple of those are related to kind of the first step of the project, which what we call a code diagnostic, and similar to when you diagnose. Um, somebody who's feeling a little bit under the weather, um, you're trying to figure out not only what the, uh, the symptoms are, but also what the, the remedies are, so that. That document will kind of be in our guidebook for, for tackling a lot of deep issues and help us. Um, kind of agree on the best way to approach those. We draft the code in what we call three different modules. Um, and those break down into zoning districts and land uses. So the cumulative zoning part of that, we're looking to tackle that kind of right away. And as we're drafting each of these modules, uh, you know, we might go back and tweak something that came before. Uh, so don't think that as we go through, and you know, we're on month four. Um, which that would be around July, which thankfully that's about when the legislature ends. Um, is in that June, July timeframe, so we should know pretty well what's going to advance and what might be dead at that point. But we can go back at any point in that process and make tweaks to prior modules. Um, development requirements that deals with landscaping, that's been brought up, um, that deals with any kind of site design standards. Um, and then zoning procedures that that deals with what's the process I have to take to get permitted, to get approved, um, for, for building and construction. Uh, we bring all those together in what's called the discussion draft. As we transition from summer to fall, um, get into pumpkin growing season, um, we've got. A community review period. It's a, it becomes kind of a public document at that point. You've got to complete. See how everything fits together. And then those last couple of months, once we get into the holidays, um, you know, we're, we're looking at. Um, possibly going for adoption to planning a zoning commission first and then to, to city council. So the, the idea is. You know, we're, we're tackling this, um, you know, all within the calendar year. But again, sometimes it, it. It takes a little bit of time to, to get things, uh, just right. So, you know, this is kind of our schedule. We want to stick to the schedule, but the important thing is that. Um, that we deliver y'all a, a document that, that's good, that works. Maybe this one holds up for forty years, you know, may, maybe it doesn't. Um, twenty years is generally a pretty good lifespan for these kinds of things, so we, we want to make sure that, that we get it right. Um, so we've kind of been through, through some of this information, you know, we're, we're working off a, a couple of different. Things, and then that housing study might, might be getting a little bit of an update, but since everybody mentioned housing, wanted y'all to know that we're, we're definitely looking at that. Um. City infrastructure master plan twenty twenty-three, so trying to align all that with, uh, with other studies that the, the city has done to kind of build on that work. Um, not necessarily go back and reinvent the wheel where we don't need to. Um. This just expands on kind of what I was talking about with the, the modules, and we'll get into this in a little bit more detail as, as we go through. Um, but essentially, the, the typical zoning ordinance, you know, it contains a lot of general provisions. This is where we get our authority to do this. Um, this is the purpose of zoning ordinance, so that if. You're familiar with kind of health, safety and welfare is being kind of the compelling government reason for, for regulating lands, you know. Where do we get the ability, uh, to, to actually do this? Comes from state law, goes all the way back to the nineteen twenties. Uh, when zoning first became common throughout the country. Uh, but it's essentially the, the power of the city to say, we're looking out for the common interest of all of our citizens. Uh, so we've adopted a zoning ordinance to, uh, to ensure that development happens in, in a way that. Uh, is beneficial and provides for the health, safety and welfare. Um, so those are just kind of general preamble comments. Already touched on site development requirements, such your, you know, your landscaping, uh, your parking, um. Building design, uh, those are definitely things that we'll want to dig into, because those are things that. Either didn't make it into the ordinance in nineteen eighty-one, or got missed, or whatever happened back in nineteen eighty-one. Um. We want to take another look at that today, because that's really where, um. The things that get built and leveled in, that's kind of where they come from, and that's. That's the starting point that you want to give to a developer, to Water Burger, or whoever to come in and say, we want to build, um, to, to this standard. Uh, kind of to your point, Mayor. Yes, company like Water Burger, they're used to building all over the state. They've got however much money in each of their landscaping packages. You know, so we, we want to make sure that what they're building, you know, in. Uh, in central Texas or in east Texas, you know, we're, we're using that same starting point here. Uh, that's where that happens is inside development requirements. Development relief procedures, you know, those, those are your variances. Um, if there's, if there's any sort of adjustments that need to be made to our, our standard requirements, that's where that comes in. Uh, already touched on zoning districts, development review body, that's you guys. Um, definitions. Comes a lot harder to enforce a zoning ordinance if things aren't properly defined, so we typically find when we go into older zoning ordinances. That there's either definitions that, that aren't there, or that need to be introduced, uh, because times change, you know, technology gets updated. Different practices get updated, um, so we pull from. All kinds of sources, um, from that. Um, the American Planning Association actually publishes a book with standard zoning definitions. There's hundreds of them in there, um, but that doesn't always incorporate everything that, that happens in communities in different parts of the United States, so. You know, obviously, industries like oil and gas are very prominent around here. That might not make it into a standard definition book that's on a nationwide level. That's where we want to come in and make sure that what we're doing is right for this area. And doesn't get y'all, uh, into any, uh, any legal trouble. Um, land uses, that's another one that tends to get outdated over time. You know, who thought that, uh, drones would be delivering, uh, you know. People's groceries, uh, back in nineteen eighty-one. Um, but today they, today they are, so those are, um, uses that we want to make sure that, that we're considering. That's where y'all can definitely help us out. Um, and, and Joe and Eli can, can help us out by. Um, letting us know what uses have people been proposing. Somebody said food trucks, you know, food trucks weren't a big thing. Twenty years ago, let alone forty years ago. That's where we need to account for that. Um, and then, uh, finally, uh, development review procedures, you know, that's just kind of laying out the process. Here's how you get from A to B. Um, from entitlement down to, uh, to getting your certificate of occupancy. So we'll go over that in a, in a little bit more detail and incorporate that into kind of an interactive exercise here in a moment. Um, want to circle back to the zoning diagnostic, because that's really the first document that you'll be seeing. Um. We'll go over that at, at our next joint meeting, uh, but the purpose of today is to, to kind of inform all of this, because the zoning diagnostic is. Going to take, you know, our observations, but combine it with, uh, your experience and what you're seeing. Um, as participants in the development community and as residents of, of the city. Um, to lay out all of the problems, um, and identify some solutions to those problems. Um, so the goal being an up-to-date, uh, easy-to-read zoning ordinance. Um, that empowers staff and council, but most importantly is legally defensible, can stand up to, uh, to legal challenges. Um. Because, again, that's a big bite to take, going from nineteen eighty-one to twenty twenty-five, and. The, you know, regardless of your relationship with the development community, going from ordinance that's that old. Where you're missing certain standards to something that's new and updated. You know, that, that's gonna be a big training process. That's gonna be a steep learning curve. Um, for folks who are used to developing under ordinances that, that are that old. Um, so we want to make sure that we lay out a very good and solid plan, uh, to, to tackle those things. Uh, so this is just, uh, kind of going back through the, the modules. We kind of already described this, and we talked a little bit about. Um, your various zoning districts, how they are cumulative. Um, and as you go kind of down that list of, of districts, you're adding more uses, but you're not necessarily taking away uses. Um, that does tend to result in, in development that, let's say, has a mixed character. If you're living on a block that used to be residential and now it's mostly businesses, um, or maybe the reverse is true. Um. It's, it's nice and flexible, you know, you, if you want to build a, build a commercial building where there used to be a house, and you don't have to go through the zoning process. You know, as a property owner, that. Look really good on paper, you know, you mean, I don't have to go through rezoning. Um, it also avoids, you know, spot zoning, which is a. Kind of a, a, a bad word, um, because it says we're gonna treat this lot different than all these lots around it. But over time, you start to see, uh, different uses creep into different areas and. Wind up with that patchwork of, of different uses. So it's kind of like spot zoning yourself. Um, you know, that's, that's one of the effects that cumulative zoning can have. If you go through a very intentional process and say, we want. You know, mixed-use development that combines residential and commercial, that can actually be a beneficial thing. But. That has to be through a very deliberate. Type of process that's based on the market, um, that, that kind of understands, um, what the. What the, the development goals are of, of the community. We'll go through that a, a little bit, um, here tonight. Uh, because that's one of the takeaways that I think we want to have from, uh, this conversation is, you know, if we had to summarize the goals of the community in three or four lines. You know, what would it be? And that way, the recommendation for the diagnostic kind of tie back to, uh, to those goals. So mention module two, that's your site development requirements, that every, that's everything that goes on the ground. It's also your definitions. Um. Module three is kind of the process of, of development as, as, as mentioned. Um. That's where we sit around a table like this, and, and we apply our codes and make sure that, uh, everything is, is developing according to the code. I mean, this, this is probably the less exciting part of the zoning ordinance, but in many ways, it's the most important part of the zoning ordinance, because this is. Usually the weak link, you know, when it comes to, um. Controversy about land use and going through the process. You know, this is often where the greatest conflicts arise, is when you have to go through a certain process. If you can just hand somebody a permit, that's easy. Everybody gets along really well, but if you have to go through a zoning process or a variance process. Um, and things aren't really defined, and the end goal is not, is not laid out, and everybody knows what they, they need to be doing. Um, then it can quickly devolve into interpretations, and this person is saying this, and this person is saying that, so. This tends to be the part that puts everybody to sleep. Um, so I don't know, we may have to play some games or something when we talk about zoning process and procedures, uh, to keep everybody awake. But I don't want to overlook this part of it, because it is so crucial. Um, so this is the, the zoning map that was referenced a, a couple of times. Um. This, this may not be updated, you know, based on what, what happened at the last meeting. Uh, but it does provide a general overview and, and layout of the different districts of, of the city. You know, we know that, for instance, uh, we kind of need to go in and do some digging and investigation when it comes to, you know, let's say, the original grid of the city. Because that's really where a lot of those cumulative zoning issues, um, are taking place, so we need to go in and make sure we understand the magnitude. Um, of the issues that we're facing there, so that we can work on, uh, developing a strategy for, for addressing those. Um. On the left is all the different articles and sections of the existing zoning chapter. Um. I, I think it's fair to say that, um. This is not how we would write a zoning ordinance today. Um. It, it has some sections that, you know, we're kind of co-mingling, where we're putting uses with zoning districts. Normally, those uses are separated out into their own chart or their own section. Uh, but what we want to hear from y'all tonight, because I promised y'all that we wouldn't just be bringing you solutions without understanding your priorities and, and what your issues are. Um. Want to hear from y'all, you know, how, how much time do you spend in your zoning ordinance? How familiar have you gotten with the, the layout of it? With how it flows? Um, I don't know how many users there are at the zoning ordinance tonight, in other words, folks who have had to come and pull a permit. Um, to do something, uh, within the city, you know, within the last few months or the last few years. If there is anybody in here. Uh. Raise your hand, because I want to hear from y'all, you know, what you think about the layout, um, of the zoning ordinance, because. We can hand you a, a template for what a good zoning ordinance layout would be, uh, but that doesn't mean that it's, it's. You know, what you're used to, that doesn't mean that it's what you're familiar with. Um, and that's what it ultimately boils down to, is making this usable for anybody who's pulled a permit. Um, for Joe and for Eli and for folks that have to administer this. Um, we want to get that feedback before we go in and start recommending solutions on, on the layout of the ordinance. It's, anybody in here want to admit to being a, a code user, or? Have any thoughts about the, the layout of the ordinance? Love it? Hate it? Little bit of both?
I, I got a signed permit not, not long ago, but it was. First, it was easy, because I, I could just walk in and do it, but I don't know about for the. Normal citizen.
It's very lengthy, obviously. It's intimidating.
Mm hmm.
I mean, all government things are typically.
Right.
Weird out.
Yeah. I, I don't know how you make it less. I guess you make it less wordy, I guess.
Less wordy, okay.
But sometimes words are important.
And, and I have nothing to do with this, I'm taking the minutes, but to be fair, it's the only one I've ever worked with.
Yeah, we don't know any better. It's a good point. This is all we knew.
The search word, it pops up when I need.
Yeah.
But, so this. Doesn't bother me, but there are probably easier ways to do that.
Mm hmm.
We've had a lot of people call and. Say that it's not very. User-friendly, very, it's not understandable, you know, and. Um. I would like to see. That become a bit more user-friendly, more understandable.
Meaning it was not written in like plain.
Yeah, because you know, I mean, yeah, you know, where's attorneys? They put this, the wordings together and.
Very legal.
Where, you know, lay people down here trying to understand, like, hey, man, I'm just. Trying to understand what it's telling me, you know, and so we get a lot of people, a lot of pushback on that, so.
Yeah, and you, you brought up definitely.
Yeah, and you, you brought up definitions. Definitely needed.
It's not what I do.
Because we're missing some definitions, sure. It, it is kind of mixed. Sometimes Eli and I have to go to a couple of different places to actually answer a question. We have to look in two different, two or three different places to come up with a, a solution and it shouldn't be that way.
David, can I ask?
Bud.
Can I ask your opinion? You've seen a lot of these. Just the only one I've ever seen.
Yeah, I mean, it, it, there is a, an efficiency issue when it comes to, to navigating it, you know? And I think if we were starting from scratch, things that. Now you've, you've got a, you've got a lot of the procedural stuff kind of down towards the bottom, but most people want to ask those questions.
That's why they're reading it.
How long is this going to take?
Is there an application for an app to be able to, for, for, you know, Joe Citizen out there to be able to? Because that's, this is where everybody's at.
That's where everybody's at, yeah.
Is there a way that we could do, is it him or something to get a whole lot more user-friendly? Have you guys seen any developments?
Yeah, yeah, they, they, there are a lot of different services out there that kind of host codes online. You know, there's Mini Code, there's a Ecode three sixty, if any of y'all have ever spent any time in Lubbock's ordinance. I believe they use Ecode three sixty.
That's what ours is on.
Okay.
People have access to that through our website.
Okay. So yeah, the, the, the short answer is, is yes. I mean, you know, we, we can do a lot with, with a lot of different platforms in terms of hyperlinking and making it so you can reference different, different regions. And they've gotten a lot better about being readable on a smartphone.
All of our websites I'd like to get where that's, it's, and not just our, our planning and zoning, but everything in our city. Because this is where fifty or hundred, that's fine, you're finding all great.
Yeah. Yeah, and, and people expect things to be easy to navigate. They, they don't want to read thirty minutes to kind of understand what they.
By that side, they don't want a people. I just want to be able to go on here and do.
Yep, I don't have to ask somebody. I don't want to call somebody. Yeah, I, I think what, what we try for is can it be understood at a sixth grade level, you know? And if not at a sixth grade, then at least middle school. So yeah, may, possibly other, other amendments we might make is, you know, the location of, of the definitions. It, it just does kind of start, if you're starting at the beginning and you've never seen it before, then immediately you're faced with this kind of wall of definitions. Those typically live half here in, in the back of the ordinance where they can, they can still be referenced, but that's not kind of the thing you're having to scroll through if, if you're on your phone.
That's annoying.
That's annoying, yeah. So yeah, there's, there's certainly some, some tweaks we can, we can make and that'll be part of the diagnostic process. It's kind of recommending a, an outline for the ordinance, trying to help walk y'all through that and, and sort of envision what it would be like at least to navigate that before we get to, we get to drafting. But again, that's something we can kind of go through and tweak as we go along. That's not set in amber, you know, until, until we go to, go for adoption. So I appreciated the exercise earlier and I, I appreciate the, the feedback about wanting to kind of push level into the, the next level in terms of, you know, what y'all are aspiring to as, as a city. You know, the, the vision is, is great. From a regulatory approach, you know, of course, we tend to run into issues sometimes when the vision starts to meet reality. And we, cities oftentimes, and you know, as, as a former city employee, you know, I, I always wanted to provide folks with the predictability that they needed to make sure that their neighbor wasn't going to do something crazy, but also the freedom to do what they wanted with their own property. And those two things obviously exist in, in a lot of tension and it's hard to do, hard to do both. We tend to come down on one side or, or the other, you know, despite our, our best intentions. So that's something we, we try to keep in mind and, and try to address and refer to in terms of are we protecting the value of property by making things predictable and regulated and process-oriented? But at the same time, somebody mentioned, you know, we want, we want to still be business friendly. And what does a business say is the friendliest thing you can do? Make it as fast as possible, make it as predictable as possible and make it as inexpensive as possible. And usually those things go to, go together, right? If you make it longer, you're making it more expensive. So we try to accommodate both of those things at, at the same time. Sometimes we do a good job and, and sometimes we have to, have to compromise a, a little bit. But wanted to stop here and, and just kind of get any additional thoughts that, that y'all had, you know, in, in terms of how you see leveling. Obviously, we want to increase our standards and that leans more through the property values thing. Maybe in terms of the value of property in the entire city because of the image that we're, we're portraying by having more landscaping, by having better buildings in time. But we want to be business friendly too, and that suggests more property rights. So say that those two things are difficult to achieve. Maybe they're not mutually exclusive, but you kind of have to lean in favor of one towards the other. Where do you fall on, on that spectrum? Property rights versus property values?
It's a tough one. Had, had clients wanting to go look at a house and saw it on, on real.com to set an appointment and about thirty minutes before the appointment, they drove by it, well, the neighbors had crap all over it. And they called back and said, no, I don't want to see it. So they didn't even get to see this house. So it, it was hurting that neighbor because they kept their crap out front, you know? So, you know, I, I want to make sure we're mindful of those things and we do have fortifications. I, I don't want to see those pushed away for the sake of, well, let's, let's make sure everybody's got, you know, free, free use of their own property. And I, I agree that you have free use, you know, until it interferes with your neighbor being able to enjoy their property. You know, with a big RV parked in the park and, and, and the driveway and the neighbors got one on each side of them and they can't see down the block.
Potentially living.
See, those things are rough, but if you look at a really nice boat, if somebody has a fishing boat right next door to me that's not an eyesore, it's fine, it's not blocking, nobody's living in it, whatever. But if she's my neighbor and they have a really terrible boat that doesn't run or, you know, I don't, I don't know.
Has lived there.
Yeah, that's got a lot of rodents maybe living in it. I don't know, but I don't want that, but I don't mind. So like, where do you draw that line?
That's a terrific example, by the way.
Living.
That live in it. I'll do that in my registration too. It has to have, it has to have. Do not have bad things, but we live in a great neighborhood, right? So Mr. Fisher down there has some questionable things on the road. They're great, but that's just an example. I've heard people complain like, I own this, I should be able to.
Do what I want.
I'm pretty sure I probably know what RV y'all are laughing about, but I, I don't, I don't know.
Think a, a great example is years ago, before I was on council or anything, P and Z and the city council took, took a big stance and we are oilfield and we are a big truck and that's who we are and that's who my husband is and I get it, I respect it. But we were bringing in large commercial trucks into our town and parking them in front of our homes that took up your parking and my parking. And then you'd go out there and start it in the morning, thirty minutes before, and that was very loud. And we said, we're not going to do that anymore. And it got tough and it got heated and people didn't really like it. But it, I will say in my opinion, it was what was best for leveling. Now, if you can fit your CDL truck in your driveway, you know, without a trailer, if you're bobtail, whatever, then that, that works. But you have to be able to put it in your driveway and, and that's hard for some people. They have to park those trucks other places. It, it was a burden on some people, but we have as a community figured it out. But that was a big stretch for us because we are, we are blue collar and, and that's okay. That's who we are and I respect that. So we have to be friendly of that, yet mindful, so.
The attitude that we had here whenever we had our meetings here several months or years ago was, was that it's my property and I dang sure do whatever I want to with it, you know? And that's, and that was a lot of the, the mentality of these people, you know? It doesn't matter what neighborhood you live in. If I want to build a, a carport out front of my house, oh God, that's what I want to do. It's my property, that's my.
I want to park in the yard.
Yeah.
That's such a big one that you hate to see so many nice homes. And then there's the one where everybody parks in the yard when there's a driveway right there. Because I don't want to park at the door. Their reasons may be far more than I understand, not trying to be judgmental.
Think safety should be a, a big consideration, you know, when thinking about what we want to allow, what we don't want to allow. You know, is it just because I don't personally like something? But I think using safety is at least a, a minimum where we should start whether or not we want to consider allowing or disallowing something, so.
Be consistent. I mean, whatever we decide, we, we've got to be consistent. I mean, we had a deal the other day that one of the guys owned a bigger building than they want, we allowed. I mean, and I can see his side because the building that got blown down was a building that was back, back in the day. It already had the, the concrete and everything there, but where you, we couldn't allow him to build that, build that size building back because we only allowed five hundred square foot.
And I think that goes back to what you said about revisiting that because a lot of these people, I'm Dylan, I had a citizen reach out. It's a different one than that one. This is what I was talking to you about. But his insurance is only paying to rebuild the building as it already was. And he was like, well, the city won't let me. And then insurance is like, sorry. So it's like, there's got to be a line there somewhere because his insurance won't rebuild something different. So I don't know, that one is hard. That one's hard.
Well, and I think we as leaders have to, have to be tough. Somebody was tough over the big truck issue, you know, and, and everybody didn't like it. And they had to say, think this is what's best for leveling. And if there are any big decisions that are made from this, ours, parking not in your yard on a, you know, on a surface or travel trailers or boats, we have to know if there, some people aren't going to like it. And that's not comfortable.
Another thing that we hear often is livestock. People want chickens and.
Especially with egg prices. I'm hearing it a lot. And we, they, this is.
But we allow chickens, right? Just no roosters?
No, no chickens.
Oh, we have a lot of houses that have chickens right now.
Allow chickens. You just, it's the number of roosters. That's where the legislature.
People think, it's an information thing. What people think is we can have chickens, right? How, it's just, it's just how many, right? That's how they phrase their question to me. It's just a limit of how many we can have, right? No, you can't have any. But Jamie's right, they're living in our town. As long as your neighbors are cool with it, it's cool. Nobody's calling it in.
Legislature is kind of saying you can't prohibit.
Yeah.
You can only prohibit the number of roosters that are there.
Yo, Eli, y'all get a lot of calls on that?
We get some, not, not a lot, but we used to get a lot.
Give them your number.
Yeah, I know a couple of years ago, it was a thing, movement, but wanted leveling.
How about peacocks?
Friendly. I lived in a neighborhood with a peacock. All right, Andrea, no.
Let's get in there, yeah.
Disco North three eighty-five.
Yeah. Yeah, you're right, urban ag, you know, that's, that's kind of coming back with food prices and eggs. And that's a component of this, you know? How do we allow people to maximize the value of their property, whether it's through that or through accessory dwelling units? You know, that's, that's another one that there's legislation that's moving rapidly. It's right now. You know, there's, there's maybe an argument that if I've got additional space on my property, then I should be able to, you know, rent that out to somebody or at least let my in-laws live there or something. That's maximizing the value of my property. But is it harming, harming my neighbor? You know, that's, that's the question. That's, that's where the tension lies. Again, some of that may be decided for us as we, we go throughout this process. If so, then we'll, we'll adapt to that. But that, that's kind of the question, you know? The purpose of that exercise is not that there's, there's one right answer and it usually depends on what you're talking about. But kind of knowing where you stand on, on that issue as we navigate each of these challenges is, it's going to be good to kind of refer back to.
The accessory dwelling unit is probably going to pass. It's because a lot of legislators are nervous because they're framing that this is a place that you could build for your mother-in-law so she could live close, you take care of her. So.
What terrifies me is that then we have people living in a, in a storage building behind there. That's not proper, doesn't have the proper power could be done, you know, without people having the right skills and that would be a fire.
I think they're still subject to the building code, but you.
Terrifies me on that.
Have to allow them to be put.
Oh my gosh.
Yes.
You know, I brought up the tiny homes. We definitely need something that our ordinance concerning those. Several calls about those. And that's for people who can't really afford a full-size home. They want something that they can afford and they can, want to know where they can put it.
So didn't we have a couple, did we have a couple that were put at Alma Trailer at one time?
Scattered.
You know, right now, we don't really have an ordinance, but I tell them it has to be in a mobile home park or RV park at this point. We kind of treat them like a, a RV.
Yes.
Along with that is we need to look at container homes, Conexes. There, there is.
I know y'all are, I'm sure aware, but in May, you know, we had a huge storm and one of our mobile home parks was in the direct sightline and was severely damaged. And so then we had people that needed help that really didn't have any resources and codes became an issue. And we had to go out there and we had real live power on the ground, people living there. And so it's, it's much better now, but codes is kind of how we navigated that at that time that this is, you can't stay here because this isn't safe. It's the only way we were able to, to do that and we're still kind of dealing with that in that area, right, Joe?
Yeah.
And we had an absentee owner.
I'm sorry.
Sorry?
I'm sorry, go ahead.
Oh, I'm done.
But Joe, I'm, some of the lots that we've been removing, some of the, I mean, they're small lots and there's no way that you can put a, a large home on some of these lots. I mean, I mean, the only thing that can accommodate is going to be a, a tiny home or a small home, something of that nature.
You know, that's why we're here. We need to work that out and figure out what, what do we want to do?
Yeah.
If, are you going to allow a tiny home just? Or do they need their own subdivision? Do they need to be, can they be on any lot? We've got to know those things.
We've got to figure it out on the west side of town, small infield for what you're making a priority to demolish those homes, which they need demolished, they're substandard. But then we have the empty lot. That's not great either. It's a, it's a lose-lose. But whatever happens to them, if, if someone wants to come in and build homes, that's not the place they're, they're looking. How do we make it the place we're looking? Has to be our design. We have to be the creator of it.
Yeah, it's going to be a specific type of home that anybody's going to come in and want to build there.
Yeah.
It's over between, you know, two other houses that not substandard, but they're not going to build a brand-new big brick home or even a brand-new big home, period.
But other communities have made that work.
This, we just need to talk to the citizens in our area and educate them. We need to clean your place so other people will come in and build some more houses. Because if you don't clean your place, nobody's going to come up here and build houses. Nobody's going to come in and live in this area. So we need to educate people like that.
The issue of, well, this is my lot. I can have it look however I want. Very similar to the carport and it's kind of that vicious circle, but I agree with you and those are things we got to do. We also today discussed about RVs is trying to manage those so people don't just kind of park those wherever they want and say, you know, it's here and I'm running an extension cord out of the house is trying to create regulations to manage those, so.
And then you have to have the resources and the personnel to be able to go deal with them. When that one has lived there for a hundred and twenty-five days and the neighbor can prove it, you have to have the resources and personnel to be able to go out and the time to, to note it and ticket it and.
And with that, would there be limitations on how long they could? Because like a lot of the show families park theirs in front of their house for a couple of days to get it ready before they leave to go on a show, your neighbors. I mean.
Why you keep picking on our neighborhood?
Other, other communities have time for it.
You know, it's for that, right? It's there for a day. They leave and they come back and they move it.
And they may be cleaning up on it, you know, I mean, four, five, six days.
Yeah, my, my dad brought one that's not even, it's a deer lease camper and had it in front of his house for a month, getting it ready for, for deer season and then left. And it's not, you know, deer lease campers aren't the fancy ones by any means.
All of them are, are the ones that they'll park on an empty lot or.
And live in them.
In their driveway and they'll live in it.
That's the permanent storage for that RV.
So that's what I'm saying. We just need to know a time limit then.
But we, well, the way we worked that out was. But we, well, the way we worked that out was we'd tell people, you cannot live in an RV inside the city. Well, it has to be in a mobile home park.
Right.
Or an RV park in order to live in a, because RVs are not made for permanent, well, they're temporary. And so you can't live in them for a very long, you know, length of time. So we don't allow it. But we need a definite ordinance stating that. Right now, we just kind of.
Winging it.
Back it up. It's, it's not easy.
Yes.
That's, that's one we can definitely address in the diagnostic process. It may involve some strategies that go beyond traditional zoning. Um, zoning is going to define, you know, what a residential area is and it will define loosely what a residence is. But you really need the building code, the residential code to undergird that. And really you need your utility code to undergird that too, because where are they, you know, dumping? Uh, where are they getting their water from? You know, if they're living there, then are they required to make a permanent connection? What does that look like? And all those things kind of fit together as, as one cohesive piece.
Are our hands very tied on mobile home communities? Um, I have no problem with them. But some of ours in our community are very, very rough. Um, I respect the people that live there, but some of those conditions are not.
Well, a lot of the residents don't even.
Um, and we don't have a lot of teeth, is that correct, Eva and Joe, right now to be able to go do some of the things to help some of these people is what we need. We need to get them out and try to help them find somewhere else to go.
Well, the problem, the problem with that is the people that rent in mobile homes.
Yes, yes, they are renting.
They don't want to fix their house so people can rent them and live in there. So the people is living there because it's cheaper rent. But the house don't look good.
Against city park.
Yeah.
Horrible.
Your hands aren't completely tied. I mean, there, there is a state process that, that allows you to require that new manufactured homes be HUD code standard.
What's the year? Isn't there a year?
Yeah, that they, that they have the sticker on them. Um, so the, your hands are not tied in, in terms of allowing something to persist indefinitely if there's.
The city put a lot of pressure on some that were on Hickory several years ago. We made some progress there. It did get better. Did, but there were, have those in other areas. We need that same pressure.
Our big challenge after the storm that we have with the mobile home parks, and it's kind of an issue we have not to the severity of that, we have a lot of absentee owners. That, that mobile home park, I think we eventually found some corporation in New York City. And it was a circus trying to navigate through it. But there's got to be some ways that we keep that current somehow. Cause I mean, if there's just any kind of issue, you don't know who to contact. And I know people, and we'd had a gentleman tonight talking about privacy. But people turn to us when there's a problem saying, okay, get this fixed. We're, we have no idea who owns this thing. It's some double S corporation out of Timbuktu.
You know, when you look at Lubbock, like Camelot or, you know what I'm saying? Those, those places are beautiful and immaculate. And I mean, they, they keep them looking nice, you know? It was like, how come we don't have, I don't want to make you sound bad, but owners that have that pride to keep up with the mobile home park the same way.
Yeah, we would be blessed to have a community palace.
Yeah, a community palace. That's, that's what we need in, in the opedikes.
Yes, compared to.
Yeah, I mean, the, the problem that, that you always run into is if there's somebody living in the unit, even if you're able to determine that it's substandard, that these are dangerous living conditions. If you remove them from the unit, you have to put them somewhere. You know, you're obligated to put them up. A hotel or, or housing, um, you know, even if it's the right and fair thing to do for them. Um, you kind of have to wait until that unit is unoccupied or something turns over, you know, whether it's some mobile home park or, um, a permanent structure. Um, you know, there are things that, that you can do in terms of minimum standards of, of maintenance. Uh, you know, there's an international property maintenance code, similar to other international building codes that determine a minimum standard of, of maintenance that does allow you to, um, have a little bit more teeth when going after the owner, um, of those parks or going after the owner of, of the unit. Um, so that you're kind of more papered up from your legal standing, uh, standpoint. Again, some of that does kind of go outside of, of zoning. They're meant to be kind of compatible, um, in that way. But that, that's just kind of an additional step and kind of goes back to our conversation of, you know, property rights versus minimum standards. But that's, those are the hard choices that, you know, ultimately have to be made is what do you do with people who actually are living in there?
Okay, question for you real quick, and it may be a question for the attorney. I know the state statutes are a minimal standard that we go by. Most of our city ordinances reflect state statute uh, and building code. The state, our ordinance now says that, uh, mobile home have to be older than nineteen seventy-six, June fifteenth, nineteen seventeen. Can we, can we change that to a more current date? You know, two thousand.
Can't, right? It's fair housing. Is that correct?
Yeah, um, you, I mean, you can require that, that they be that date, but that's, becomes a HUD code thing, um, where it's kind of their standards that are evaluating that manufacturing process. Um, I know HUD has, has updated some of their standards. Um, so we can go back and, and take a look at that and see if there's, if there's a date that we can refer to. Um, but ultimately it's going to come back to their certification process. So if it has that label on there, then it becomes more difficult for you to manage things, at least from a, what's called a structural standpoint. Now, in terms of skirting and, you know, minimum landscaping standards and things like that, that's still in your purview to regulate the same as, as we regulate a site-built home. Um, but once you get inside those walls, then that's really kind of, that remains HUD's domain. Well, I do want to touch on a couple of other things. Um, do appreciate the discussion. Um, we've been going for a little more than an hour. Um, time has, has flown by, but just want to touch on kind of where we want to, to get to. Like, what is this all leading to? You know, I've, I mentioned, uh, development goals and these are just kind of general, almost generic and of development goals. These could apply to a lot of different cities. Um, but these are, there are reference points that we want to have to refer back to as, as we're developing this diagnostic. And we're hopefully coming back to you in, in a few weeks and laying out these issues and saying, okay, where do we want to focus our, our attention and, and our energy? And how do we make sure that we're on the right track? So want to talk a little bit about Levelland's, uh, development goals. You know, how do, how do we inform this, this list? That's honestly kind of a generic list and maybe should have some more specific things associated with it. And as we're thinking about that, you know, the different objectives that a zoning ordinance has is concerning balance of uses, you know, residential versus non-residential. Um, you know, that gets into questions such as, do we want to be a bedroom community? Or do we want to be a full-service community? You know, as a city with a historic square and a historic grid, you know, the purpose of, of Levelland was to provide areas for both commercial and residential uses. Um, you know, you have major highways coming through town. Those facilitate a lot of truck traffic and a lot of industrial potential. Somebody brought up, um, wanting to do something with the vacant industrial land. That's off of Highway one fourteen. What is the right balance of, of uses? Um, are there any uses that need to be tweaked or added? You know, brought up drone deliveries earlier. Um, that may not be the most pressing issue, um, for, for this city, but maybe there's some other things like food trucks that we, we need to address. Um, the quality of development, we've touched on that, you know, whether it's landscaping or it's, um, kind of regulating parking and, and appearance. Um, and then the efficiency of the process. And that's the one that kind of tends to get left behind sometimes and can be a little dry and boring, but is just as crucial as the other three. Um, we've been kind of going through these exercises as, as we've walked through this tonight. So I don't necessarily think we need to revisit them because we've touched on a lot of these issues. But, you know, each of these kind of deserves a lot of conversation and a lot of, uh, thought and, and intent. Um, we can kind of look at it through our standpoint with our experience and seeing different ordinances throughout the state or in Abdul's case, uh, multiple states. Um, but these are also things that need to be informed by, by y'all and your experience. You know, how do we, um, tackle these issues and, and what do we look for? You know, y'all have given us a, a lot of good feedback tonight. Um, I do, in the time we have left, you know, let's say ten minutes, want to run back through those, make sure that we are encapsulating everything that, that we've heard from y'all tonight or add anything that was missing. Um, but maybe let's, let's start with these goals, what y'all think of those goals. And then kind of work backwards through those topics and, and make sure that each of those three areas has, has been, um, has been thoroughly, uh, looked at. So first promote private property rights while ensuring predictable land uses and consistent standards. Somebody mentioned consistency. I love that. Making sure that it's applied consistently is key, no matter what end of the, the spectrum you fall on with that. Um, streamline development approvals, remove redundancies and red tape. Anybody disagree with that goal? Um, promote positive outcomes, um, for developers, the city and stakeholders during the development process. That's great. Improve outdated, ineffective or obsolete regulations. An ordinance that's forty-four years old, probably don't need to talk about that one way too much. But what I want to know is how do we make this more specific to Levelland? Because this probably ninety-nine out of a hundred cities would probably agree that all these things are good. This is what we want to strive for. These are good goals.
We have to take into effect that we have pump jacks in the middle of residential neighborhoods in the, in between two homes. Um, right by school, right by football stadium. We make the fences around them red and black. We try to make them pretty. Uh, so, I mean, the oil field is here. That's right.
Okay.
We're, we're living in it. Um, and that's okay. We, it's who we are. If, uh, we have drainage issues, we're flat, you know, the, the, the water has to. Water has to go somewhere. Uh, we, we have the oil field. I mean, these big trucks drive through our community every single day and we need them to because they stop and they eat and they buy fuel. Uh, farming is huge is, is well, you know, you'll see tractors on the perimeters of our community. It really happens. Um, module trucks is a big deal during, um, harvest seasons, but they don't really come through town that much. Unless I'm missing that.
Oh, yeah.
They rode right down the street.
Yes, I mean, this is who we are. And, uh, and they come in the middle of town. They come to where you work. They've got to do paperwork there. It's why your parking lot's so big.
So you're touching on a lot of aspects of community. And, you know, I, I was born in Amarillo, so I've seen some pump jacks, but I, I don't see them often anymore. So coming here and just kind of seeing in the middle of town, they look almost alien.
We built homes around them.
It's also kind of cool.
Yeah.
Pump jacks look cool. I, I don't mind.
Kids love them.
Look cool. Yeah.
They don't bother us.
Yeah. So you're touching on aspects of community character, you know, and how do we, how do we use that as an asset, you know, the farming community? Lots of places like to claim to have a farming heritage, but it hasn't been there since like a hundred and twenty years ago. But y'all have that. You've got that in town. It's very visible. Should we, should we preserve that? You know, as, as a functioning component of the community, a cultural component of the community so that we're saving those, those, you know, greenfields. You know, that's kind of more of a policy type of issue, but it also gets into landing.
Something we haven't mentioned is the education. Um, South Plains College is our number one, uh, employer. It's right in the middle of town. It's growing. Uh, at any moment, they could say, we're going to build three new dorms. And our influx of people in town would, would increase. And, um, those kids don't really have, a lot of them don't have cars. And they walk in town. They have, they walk to Walmart from SPC to United all the time. They walk to McDonald's. Um, but SPC has to be considered. They are growing and they're stretching their boundaries as well. They're not just right there on their campus anymore. That's something to consider too.
One thing we talked about on the tour today is, is that exact thing of SPC of, as restaurants come in, whether it's fast food or where they sit in, um, creating the gathering places, outdoor patios or something. I know it's hot. I know there's wind, but there are times of the year and college kids are looking for those places where they could gather as a group and sit and have tea, have coffee, have other drinks, have the wifi. We need to, as our businesses are coming in, especially our eater, creating those kind of environments. So that, uh, you know, the kids will want to go there and hang out.
And College Avenue is full. And if you want to build something new, you're going to have to buy something and tear it down or we're going to have to go off of College Avenue. We're already seeing that with some development. So our development in the next twenty years is going to change. See, it's probably going to be off of College Avenue a little bit.
College Avenue for one block either side is all commercial to, to maybe hold some of that. But yeah, we do, when you look at, is it going to be Houston? Is it going to be Austin? Is it going to be another avenue? It's our concentration for that new development.
Yeah, Houston got a lot of places that they could build.
Yeah.
They pour, uh, a lot of pavings and.
Opportunities.
Yeah, opportunities. If somebody, if, if they want to sell, you know, business to come in.
Old Bounty Law is, I understand it's going to be built on, so.
Oh, yes.
Yeah. The Oxy complex is huge for our community. It draws a lot of people along with the Mallet Event Center. So there's that, you know, northward traffic.
Can I ask a question on college and other commercial corridors that, are there certain corridors that? I'm, I'm going to use the overlay term, you know, do they need even higher standards? So let's say we have landscaping throughout town, but we're not going to necessarily do anything on building design, except if you're on college or except.
What about a couple of blocks? In the square, I mean, that's where we're about to see, we believe, a, a, a large financial institution built right off of Houston, right behind Diggies.
Okay.
Um, I hope, my dream, my hope is that that is the beginning of that westward development. Infill back into the western portion of town. You could, there's tons of blocks there where you could build it. Not going to be a build on College Avenue. Maybe we can go that way. We can prove that that will work. Avenue H is a huge, those are our gate, Sherman, Avenue H and College Avenue are, are gateway. Sherman, if I'm coming into Levelland from SPC, I'm going to turn off one fourteen on Sherman. It is a huge deal for South Plains College for Sherman to be clean, nice and tidy. Okay, they come to Alamo. You do, and you go right by my house.
Since you're in high school, drop off.
So coming into town, it'd be Alamo, Sherman, College Avenue, Avenue H. Those are our gateways. Um, but.
And then the crosses would be Houston and Austin.
But Sherman and, and Avenue H are, are our gateways. Sherman for SPC, I mean, Dr. Satterwhite at the college says all the time, you know, if he's bringing people to town, he hopes they turn at the right place and things look nice. First impressions matter. If you're having somebody come look at a house, you hope they turn at the right place, right?
Please don't go down this road.
Yes.
Follow me. I'll take you to the pretty, the pretty ass.
Uh, city park's important. We, we're, we're working on, we're working on city park. And, um, we've got a lot of ground to make, but it's important and it's a priority.
Place that park need to.
Mm-hmm, yeah. And it's big. Can I ask what y'all's impression of our community is without feeling like you have to be nice or say the perfect things?
I'd, I'd say you're, you're facing the same challenges as, as a lot of communities, uh, where there was rapid expansion, you know, at some point in, in the past and, um, particularly in West Texas, a lot of cities are just susceptible to the boom bust of the, the oil industry. Um, you know, same thing with agriculture, you know, cotton that you, you have the, the infrastructure of a city that's has, you know, emptied out a little bit, not drastically. You know, we're not talking about just blocks and blocks of kind of vacant properties. Um, but it's, it's kind of like, you know, when you buy clothes and then you go on a diet and then, you know, the clothes are a little loose. Um, some of the infrastructure is a little loose, you know, that, that's not the worst problem to have. Um, that means you've got places where construction can happen and you've already got the infrastructure in place. Um, you've already been maintaining it. It's already paid for, which is great. Um, you know, that is something where success, um, might need to beget success. You know, that is something where success might need to beget success. That first domino might need to fall, you know, somebody mentioned an investment that that you hope will happen, you know, close to the square. Sometimes these things need a proof of concept. And maybe it's just a little too easy to to drive to Lubbock, you know, we had a conversation about the baseball terminus that happened in the the Oxy Sports Complex, you know, that brings in a lot of people, a lot of families. Unless they're in an RV, they need somewhere to stay. But Lubbock is right down the road, you know, twenty-five minutes away. What what else needs to happen to start driving, you know, some of that hotel development, you know, heads and beds? There's a lot of opportunities there. But like like most cities, you know, you've you've dealt with kind of the the ups and downs of of development. Happens in Texas cities, you know, even though we like to think we're growing forever and growing indefinitely. There's there's schools in in the Dallas-Fort Worth area that are closing right now because their population has plateaued. Their kids are moving out of homes and the parents are left and the parents can't move out because they can't afford to downsize. And nobody can move into the houses that the parents have moved out of, so they're kind of stuck a little bit.
What about some of the short-term rental stuff? We need to make sure that we 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 address that because Airbnb is kind of getting.
It's so big.
We have, we have four or five events, huge events a year with a Clovis horse sale that comes into our community, plus everything else at the Mallard. That's the first thing that lots of folks do is, where's the Airbnb's at? We have a few in town, but we want to make sure that we address those and do we want to make, do we want to make sure we have ordinances to keep them from having certain amount of cars parked out there with, you know, non-related residents in the same, you know, what kind of ordinances do we need to protect the residents around that?
And group homes become an issue in our community. And how do we until they have to get a permit, we have to have so many within an area. My, what I've seen with the group homes is that the homes deteriorate, it's just been my personal experiences with the ones that I drive by every day when I leave my house. But I mean, everyone has to go that way, but they they'll buy that underdeveloped home and the home that needs remodeled that they can put four or five residents in.
Yeah.
In a neighborhood.
Not to harp on the the state thing, although it sounds like a broken record, you know, on the table, let you do this or that. There has been legislation introduced that would possibly streamline the group home regulation, it wouldn't necessarily take it all out of the city's hands. But it would kind of provide some model regulations that could help with some of that. A lot of that is still regulated by the state, depending on the type of of group home that it is. I would go back to the question about manufactured home parks. When addressing the Airbnb conversation, you know, the the place where cities have gotten in trouble, whether it's Fort Worth, Arlington, Austin, is in trying to ban Airbnbs, I think there's still some room to do some regulation, do some registration. Kind of getting back to the manufactured home conversation that we were having, it can be really hard when you have an absentee landlord landowner and you're dealing with parties and a lot of cars parked in the street. It it helps to have a registration where you've got a point of contact, you know, a local point of contact who acts as a property manager. It it does get a lot more difficult when you're requiring, you know, the owner to live in in the unit. Because that's just not Airbnb's model or VRBO.
And we haven't had any issues, I just want to make sure we do stay ahead.
Yeah.
I say we haven't had any, we've probably got a few.
No, this is the perfect time to do it, you know, absolutely, and and that gets into the manufactured home conversation too, you know, having having a rental registration, you know, is something that that cities have found success in in terms of knowing how many there are, knowing who the owners are. And really building a relationship, you know, there's there's kind of the carrot and the stick approach, you know, where you're going after people, but the reverse of that is, you know, trying to build those relationships with with folks who are, you know, your your property owners. Understanding that not everybody can afford to buy, you know, some people have to rent, but knowing who the key players are, you know, will will help a lot.
You mentioned the bedroom community. Lubbock's growing westward, I'll take some of that bedroom community, I'd love you to choose to live here because you can get across town in five minutes and get to the grocery store just like this. And if you need to work in Lubbock at tech or something, that's fine, live here, that's great. We want more of that, we need more of that, we think we're better, I want you to choose to live here even if you need to work over there. We're pro that.
We had a discussion one time about if we had more houses, because a lot of nurses come from other countries and they work in Lubbock, if they could find homes here in Levland, they would move over here because it's not that far. Nurses that worked in in the hospital, big hospitals. And we had a discussion there probably about four years ago, something like that. But that was it, just a question.
What do you see in in your estimation? What can we do? Short haul and long haul, sort of get out of this mold of like other cities, say. How can we break that? What can we do that would be in the short haul dramatic, maybe, and the long haul? Long-term planning that would be possible and beneficial?
Well, I think we've we've identified several things here tonight, you know, in terms of property maintenance, in terms of development standards, you know, the hard thing is generating job creation. You know, you have some tools at at your disposal, you know, with the with the EDC. Y'all have the county seat, right? So being, you know, being the county seat provides some of that stability in terms of having a jobs base and, you know, preventing decline past a certain point, but, you know, it it may be that you go through a period of of a time of being a bedroom community, you know, people commuting to to Lubbock, but that's not necessarily always the case. Once, you know, industrial land starts developing and and once, you know, businesses start to come in, more businesses tend to follow, you know. Use kind of Slim Chickens as as the example, you know. Now Whataburger is coming, those aren't the most exciting things, you know, in the grand.
But if you want my opinion, Starbucks is what broke our glass ceiling.
That's it, yeah.
We got Starbucks, we got tea places, we get Slim Chickens, we get Whataburger, we get Wendy's.
That's right, so kind of going to the next level with that in terms of bringing in other business and that investment, kind of creating that snowball effect, you know, will it turn you into the next Lubbock? No, but it will keep the momentum going forward.
Being from Amarillo, I don't know why we can't be a canyon.
We're so jealous of Canyon.
Yeah, that's that's a great.
Good reasons.
They have a uniform, beautiful downtown, they have a beautification project citywide, they're anchored with a college that's comparative in size to what we have at South Plains. People choose to live there over Amarillo and commute many minutes every day.
Driving restaurants.
Yes, continue to build housing areas for single-family homes and different subdivisions. I mean, that's
That's who we want to be.
Magic, I don't understand how it happens there as opposed to here.
Is Amarillo so bad that they want it out? Because I don't understand.
I think I think what attracts people to Canyon is the, it's like a canyon. It's kind of low in there and it gives the wind just going over their head and everything. It's beautiful, it's beautiful.
Canyon has the absolute world's best university.
Might have gone to school there, it might be alumni.
System, come on now.
We have two in the room.
Yeah, better.
And they do have.
They have what? That's better than W T.
But you have to be jealous of someone, and we are sort of jealous of them for for a couple of things, and just want want what they have.
No, that's awesome, I mean, that that's one of the one of the things is, you know, we're we're going through and kind of comparing y'all's ordinances, you know, yeah, what what other communities do you compare yourselves to? I mean, when you look at the communities across West Texas, you know, there's the big cities and then there's a lot of little towns. You know, y'all are kind of somewhere.
Same view.
Yeah.
A little bit.
Brownfield, you know.
We're so much better than Brownfield.
Big spray, yeah. Who do you want to be? Who do you want to be when you grow up?
A lot more like the Canyon. That's a good, good model for.
I'm working with a company delivering brick. And it's been like twenty-eight years back when I started, we started delivering brick and then and Plainview. And I did, I saw Plainview plain, nothing. Now you go to Plainview and it's big. Got a business everywhere. Got a college in there.
And they are on the interstate. That's one thing.
Walmart Distribution Center.
Do they really?
Oh, yeah, huge, a ton, I can't even imagine who made jobs.
I've got a question. If somebody buys a mobile home and said it in their property, can they break that mobile home? Will there be an ordinance for that?
They would have to, they would have to make it a permanent dwelling, take the axles, wheels out. Secure it.
Put it on foundation?
But you can, right?
The brick itself has to have a footing.
Yeah, I understand that, you know.
They have to get a permit for that?
Okay. But the the reason is, I live, I live in a mobile home, I'm going to wheel some of there and nothing. But it's it's under simmer blocks. Got a big block on the bottom, they put simmer box. And I got the brick to break it. But I need, I need to know. What do I have to do to do it?
You've already got it tied down.
Yeah.
Yes.
Probably have to put in a footing for your.
Footing for the brick.
Okay. As we start to wrap up the the conversation, is there anything else on this list of goals, you know, if these were to become our goals for doing this zoning ordinance update? Is there, you you spoke mayor about some of the cultural aspects preserving, you know, your kind of oil and gas heritage, your agricultural heritage. Any anything else on on there that we would want to tweak or add or?
We're the city of mosaics, that's the only other thing I can think of.
Oh, say that again?
We're the city of mosaics.
City of mosaics, yeah, saw saw some references to that.
It's legit.
But that is, businesses when they build, they incorporate a mosaic.
So one, one of the things we'll look at is, you know, how to have a development, you know, because because so many of our tools have been kind of restricted in terms of buildings look a certain way. We're kind of approaching it more from nudging people to do the right thing by offering them some incentives. Now, there's got to be some base standards to provide some leverage for that. Which maybe comes out of landscaping or parking or something like that, but that that absolutely could be one of the, you know, steering people in the right direction. Putting that into, you know, part of the.
It's becoming more more of a thing that
Yeah.
Places that are building are installing them, so it's kind of becoming a new building thing, which is wonderful.
Yeah, I mean, there there's some national businesses like Raising Pains that kind of incorporate that into their standard.
Amar, who, San Angelo has the sheep, right? Outside of these, Rams, sorry. But that's really neat.
It's not a real university.
Rams are real.
And I agree, and I think that's kind of one of the culture things we're trying to shift as a city, councils ask for that, staff, we're trying to get to that point to where we can be more proactive and anticipate things and keep us moving that way.
Were we looking at having any kind of citizen input? This, this project?
So each of these workshops will be public meetings like tonight, so those will be publicly, you know, available for students to to come and attend and and listen in. You know, we've we've got tools, like I I mentioned, we'll have the discussion draft, it's kind of a the community review. There there are tools available that will allow the public to kind of review the draft and and make comments. There's one particular software that we've used on on other zoning ordinance projects called Conveo that we can we can leverage to provide public review of of the draft. We can also make all the materials, like each of our workshops will have kind of a PowerPoint like this, it'll kind of walk through each of the each of the steps that we're doing, so that's something you know, that we we can make publicly available. And it's also, as we go through the adoption process, you know, there will be a notification process that there's a state mandated process, but there's also processes we could do on our own that we can, we can discuss.
The reason why I'm asking, because in the past, when whenever we've had this kind of stuff, you know, you 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 make it available for people to come up there and anticipate town hall meetings and everything like that, some people participated in. But there's a bunch of them that didn't. And then whenever the ordinance comes out, they wonder what smacked them in the face.
Yeah.
See what I'm saying?
I will say.
Because of the non-participation.
Involved in a zoning ordinance project where we mailed postcards to every resident, every property owner and business in the city and invited them to a town hall and we've got seven people. You know, so we, we can put it out there, that doesn't necessarily mean that that folks will participate, but yeah, we don't want to get get in a position where we're not letting people know what's going on. These, these don't tend to drive as much interaction as frankly, as, you know, parks projects and things that are fun that people can touch and they they often don't understand what happened until it already happened.
But we can do our absolute dead level best to advertise these.
People pay attention to our, I hate to just say social media, but they pay attention to it, drive it. We're doing a much better job of that.
Usually the police department's Facebook page has the most followers.
Yeah, we'll put it over on their page.
Any, anything else from anybody else, this this corner over here was a little quiet. But he said it all. Well, again, thank you. The next steps, we'll get to work on developing a report. We'll work with these guys to get that all put together so that y'all can review it, give y'all time to to look at that. And our next workshop, we don't have a date scheduled for it yet, but y'all will have a chance to to look through that and see how well we we responded to to your feedback, see if we missed anything. Again, none of this has been set in amber until, you know, we have that full draft and we're going to do an adoption, so that's kind of our our next step. Any other comments or questions before I turn it back over to to the mayors?
Whatever, whatever changes we make in the ordinance, make them easy on Eli.
You're so right, Joe. Let's do them there. Eli's like, yes. All right. Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for your time, thank y'all for your time. Yeah, with that, we are adjourned.